It is six PM on November eighteenth. It's getting darker earlier. Um, we've got some good meaty stuff to discuss tonight, so we're gonna jump right into it. I never get to use this and I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna call us to order and I'm gonna get a microphone to do that. So I'm gonna... That's weird. Okay, I won't do that anymore. Vicki, can you call roll?
Yes. Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Norris.
Here.
Ms. Schwartz.
Here.
Dr. Schenck.
Here.
Ms. Upchurch.
Here. Can we have our Kenna and Sean? Would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, absolutely. If you don't...
It's okay. You don't have to say.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both so much. Okay, we're gonna open it up with A three, Approval of Agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Ms. Upchurch, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to pull the Consent Agenda item E four, the selection of Bridge Brothers for the construction of pedestrian bridge in connection with Safe Routes to School project for further discussion and consideration for approval following current Agenda item D four.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion at this time? No? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Wood.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Ms. Schwartz.
Aye.
Dr. Schenck.
Aye.
Okay, so we will discuss that, we'll pull that out, and that will happen after D four. We'll put that right between Consider Approved Changes to the Board of Education meeting schedule and Approval of Consent Agenda. Moving on to B one, Elevate D thirty-eight Recognition Award. I would like to turn this recognition over to Amy Matizik, who will then introduce our staff for recognition.
All right, well, thank you, President Upchurch. Again, I'm Amy Matizik, the Director of Communications, and for our Elevate thirty-eight recognition tonight, I am so pleased to have the opportunity to help celebrate a coach who currently serves at Lewis Palmer High School. Coach Don Lash coaches girls volleyball at Lewis Palmer, and he brings more than forty-three years of experience to this position. Not only did he lead his team to do very well in a state competition over the weekend, but get this, just recently, he chalked up his six-hundredth career win. So we have with us tonight the principal from Lewis Palmer High School, Bridget O'Connor, as well as Coach Lash, and at this time, I would like to invite both of them up to the podium, and Bridget is going to share a little bit more about Coach Lash and his contributions at Lewis Palmer High School.
We're both just a little competitive. Thank you so much for this opportunity to honor, really, a legend that you see before us. Obviously, with forty-three years, I could say a lot of things, but I'm gonna keep it as succinct as possible. I want you all, well, those of you that can, to go back to nineteen eighty-five in your head. Yeah, I know, you can't. That's okay. Pretend. Nineteen eighty-five was when Coach Lash arrived to Lewis Palmer High School to coach volleyball and teach math, and I happened to be a fairly awkward sophomore in high school, and I was so excited when Coach Lash arrived. Also, kinda going back in history, Lewis Palmer volleyball was not at all on the map at that point, which is really hard to think about because we are so competitive and have numerous accolades, and he's really the person that's responsible for that. He loves a project, he loves a challenge. Not only did he completely rebuild and revolutionize the volleyball program at Lewis Palmer High School, he went on to do the same at Elizabeth, at Coronado. Again, he loves to take something and turn it around. Of all the things that I could say, I didn't actually get a whole lot further than our very first core value that we have in this district, which is that of integrity. On our website, it says, "Our people are genuinely authentic and demonstrate courage in their honest character." I tried to think about what Coach Lash taught me, which is so many things, but I think integrity is absolutely what sticks in my mind. For me, the definition of integrity is a state of being whole and not divided, and your words and your deeds match. That is critical for a coach when you're influencing high school students. It's critical for any leader to have any sort of credibility. Why did I, I think of this for Coach Lash. Again, as a sophomore in high school, I watched him make difficult decisions as a coach that weren't popular, but they were always done to his core values and what he believed was right, and that modeling then shaped all of us on the team. Throughout his course, he is unwavering in his core values and his moral compass. It doesn't mean that he's not willing to grow or learn or make mistakes, but he always goes back to his core values when he leads, when he makes decisions, and when he cares about other people. This is where I think you're gonna be proud of me, Coach Lash. The other thing I really am always struck by, there's a question on the Common App that asks educators, compared to how many students you have taught over how many years, you know, where does this student lie? And so I did some math. This is where you're gonna be proud. The other thing that a lot of people don't necessarily know, he was an excellent math teacher. So he was a teacher for twenty-seven years, from nineteen seventy-six to two thousand and three. So for twenty-seven years, average a hundred and fifty students, that's four thousand and ninety students that you've impacted, directly impacted. And for the athletes, a program, a volleyball program's roughly thirty athletes times forty-three years, that's one thousand two hundred and ninety students. That's five thousand three hundred and eighty lives directly impacted by this man's leadership. And exponential, because obviously those leaders will go out and lead other people with those same core values. In fact, some of my athletes were coaching, they have daughters, like if you look at the world of volleyball, if you look at that state tournament, you could point to numerous people that point back to Coach Lash's leadership. Last but not least, at Lewis Palmer, we've started a tradition this year where we honor legacy teacher and staff members who uphold and still have passed on legacy throughout the building and throughout our tradition and our culture. And Coach Lash is also a legacy staff member, so we want to present this to you. Family, it's who we are, so thank you for leaving a lasting impact on Lewis Palmer High School. And I also wanna very quickly introduce Joyce. We all know that behind every successful man is an equally important and giving woman, and Coach Lash also had two daughters go through Lewis Palmer High School and play for him, both Julie and Stephanie. So, congratulations, Coach.
Coach, don't go anywhere. We'd also like to invite up our athletic director, Nick Baker, to take pictures with you because we're all a family. We'd invite you to say, do you have any words you'd like to share, sir?
I hate to follow Bridget because I have to lower the microphone. No, just to, Bridget makes it sound like I did all of this, and it's never that way, and she knows that. There are so many people that, when you're successful, that contribute to that. I've had excellent assistant coaches all the way through. I've had people like Bridget who, when I came in, helped to turn this program around. She doesn't tell about herself being an excellent athlete, but she was, and she made a difference. And Nick and Bridget, this year for hiring me, they didn't have to do that. Nobody hires somebody of my age to coach young kids. It's just you don't find those people doing that. So their contributions to that, and to my wife, who's, I can't even guess, she's watched over two thousand volleyball matches over the course of these years, and does it because she loves the game and just loves to be supportive. So there are so many people who have contributed so much, and Lewis Palmer is just a great place for that, so I thank all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Can we get a picture of the two of you first? Tiffany, can we get a photo of the two of them with their owly pockets as well?
So while they're doing that, I've had the honor to be on the court with Coach Lash playing volleyball.
Really?
And, oh yeah. He's not a setter, he's a hitter, and he demands that we set him, and he's a fierce competitor. Back in the nineties, he would sneak us into the LP gym when nobody was looking and all the old farts would play. And I'll bet, and he's also a warrior, he's overcome significant health issues, and he's here to tell about it and to still keep helping other people and give of himself, and that's the mark of a true American. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vicki, do we have any public comments? Okay, thank you so much again for your service to our students and caring, and that's, the legacy is just phenomenal, that's awesome. Okay, moving on to B number two, Public Comments. We do not have any public comments, so we are going to skip over even reading about public comments, and we're gonna go straight into Board Member Comments. And we'll start right at the end with you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I do not have any committee updates at this time, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Dattery and the leadership team, as well as my fellow board members, for an informative and productive retreat last week. I appreciate the detailed information that the leadership team is able to bring to us so that we can make informed decisions, and I appreciate my fellow board members for having a great team, great team of people that we can work together and make some good progress. So I'm excited for everything we're working on and looking forward to continuing the momentum.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Schwartz.
Just a quick shout out to both the theater companies. Our athletes get a lot of accolades, but I was fortunate enough to attend both the productions on Thursday and Friday nights, and it was just unbelievable, the quality of quantity performances that these groups continue to produce, and the passion that the kids have, and the, it's inspiring, the quantity of energy that they produce and have, and they just do a wonderful job, so kudos to them, and thank goodness we live in a place where the parents and the community are willing to invest in two quality theaters.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Dr. Schenck.
So I'm going to tell you a little bit about what happened at PCAC on November twelfth, and I'm not gonna go through everything, but just a few things. I really enjoyed, one of the students at Monument Academy Secondary School presented just a great presentation on the Monument Academy West. East, thank you. And it was really fun to listen to her talk about her school, and that's what we want for all of our students, is to feel that invested in their school, and it was just really good. I did a Board of Education update, and nobody booed me, so I consider that a win, and then Rick Frampton and Dennis Coats gave a presentation on safety and security and health and wellness of our students, and it was very interesting. We had that same presentation here, and it was really nice to hear it again and get some of that, some of that cemented for my own brain. So that was super, and then we had committee updates, and that was the meat of the meeting, and it was a really good one, and I had a hard time finding Monument Academy, but I made it there before I was too late. So I'm happy about that. I also wanted to thank Bridget O'Connor, because every time she talks, I hear something I wanna write down, and that's, you know, and I write, I write down a lot, and I've been going to her, her meeting on, what's the name of the book?
Anxious Generation.
The Anxious Generation, and it's been fabulous, and I write things down that she and other people say there as well, but the discussion about integrity, really important and really important to us as a board, so thank you.
Mr. Norris?
No comments.
Okay. Well, I wanted to echo what my fellow board members said, first and foremost. October is always bustling, bus, bustling, that's the right word, and it's always busy. There's lots of good things going on in our district, and our work session, or actually it was our retreat, I felt was extremely productive. There's so much coming forward, and within the next month, October and November and December are going to continue to be busy because we've got some, some good decisions coming forward, and I just wanna say thank you to the staff, our administrative staff that works behind the scenes here at Big Red. The work that you put together and presented to us during the retreat was, it was just, it was top-notch, so thank you, and it gave us, it gave me personally the information that I needed to see and hear to be able to make good educated decisions, so thank you so much. I wanted to share that on November second, Girls on the Ridge hosted the Harlem Wizards and our own D thirty-eight Dream Team, and it's always so much fun, and it was an honor to support our women's athletes, and it was equally fun this year for Mr. Brown and I to announce our D thirty-eight Dream Team. Sorry, it didn't go off as well. Anyway.
I'm still hearing about your announcement capabilities.
It was just, it was a lot of fun, and it was always a good time when community comes together, and as Patty alluded to just now, last week, we had our PCAC meeting at M A East, and she did a fantastic job on her presentation. We also heard about some calendar decisions that are coming forward, and some, just some tweaks and some on the calendar, and one of the things that inspired me was the Graduation Task Force that is hard at work, and they're working on credit attainment, which includes elective requirements, PE, and middle school courses, weighted grades and class rank, and other considerations such as honor cords, study hall requirements, so they're going to be working very diligently throughout the school year, and I'm excited to hear what they've got coming forward to present to the board later this year. D thirty-eight Foundation met to work through our advanced grants, and I cannot, I'm not, I can't give you any spoilers, but needless to say that they voted to award multiple advanced grants, and for anybody who doesn't know what advanced grants are through the D thirty-eight Education Foundation, it supports continuing education through professional development and continuing education for our district thirty-eight educators, and we just, we wanted to elevate our people and attract new educators by helping them stay updated with the latest teachings and methodologies and ensuring that our students are receiving a top-notch education. But one of the things that I can't, that I, it's been weighing on my heart was, I wanted to share that according to the Colorado Department of Education, dyslexia affects fifteen to twenty percent of the population, and there are many more who go undiagnosed, making it prevalent in every single classroom in our schools. And so it's just seeing the different applications for grants as they relate to the READ Act and helping our students, and the instruction and remediation for students on READ plans with reading difficulties requires highly trained classroom teachers, and not just in the class, general ed teachers applying as well as teachers that were applying in intervention settings, so it just, it weighed heavy on my heart. We see in the Colorado State legislation every year, them visit these types of topics such as dyslexia and how it affects our students in the entire state of Colorado, and there's a lot of debate about it, but what I found to be so inspiring is that it is a testament to the quality of the caring educators that we have here in D thirty-eight, and it's all of our teachers that really wanna lean into every student every day, regardless of their abilities and their backgrounds, and so it just, it was very inspiring and also something that it made me realize that we as a district need to seriously look at what are we doing to read it, to lean into these students. And then finally, I wanted to share, well, we didn't have the Special Education Advisory Committee because of the snow, and with the three snow days and cold and flu season and performance and athletic events and all that goes into October, November, and December, I just wanna quickly wish everyone a much-needed and deserved time off next week during our Thanksgiving break and fall break, so happy Thanksgiving and fall break, everyone, and I hope you get some much-needed rest, and that's all I have to share. Dr. Dattery? Oh, actually, I think we're going to, we're leaning into our students first. Our high school student representatives.
Would you like me to introduce them, President Upchurch?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I was gonna have, yeah, that works.
So to my right, who just stood up, is Kenna Drake. She's Vice President of Palmer Ridge Student Council, a senior. She's also been accepted to the School of Engineering at Arizona State University and hopes to study mechanical engineering and is awaiting further acceptance into the Honors College, so congratulations. She's on the tennis team and works several hours at Walmart, and to her right is Sean Ray, who's the President of Palmer Ridge Student Council, also a senior. He's got a nomination into the United States Air Force Academy, captain of the soccer team on the Honor Society, and both of their families are retired Air Force pilots, so thank you and the balance of your families for the commitment you made, along with your father's, to help protect our country.
Thank you so much.
You guys have a presentation to go through. Tell us a little bit about what's happening at Palmer Ridge.
Yeah, so I'd first like to thank all of you for having us. It's truly an honor to be here. To go, starting into tonight, we would just like to walk through recent life at Palmer Ridge, what it's like with the sports, arts, how spirit is, and recent changes undergoing at Palmer Ridge. Life at PR is pretty great, I love it there, and that's, that's a lot thanks to the teachers, staff, and administration, all making it such a great school and the best part, and the best school to be a part of.
All right, so I would like to start off with some of our sports that are a little less known. For the first time in history, all four boys qualified as a team for their state championship. For softball, first time also in history that they won the state championship, and for tennis, three boys also qualified for state, and then for our cross-country team, the girls qualified for state for the first time since two thousand and twenty, and for the fifteenth year in a row, the boys team also qualified for state.
PR football has always been something that has had a lot of success, and we are continuing it this year. Last year, we were the state finalists in the Chassa four A state tournament, and this year, we are following in that footsteps. We currently have, are ranked number four in the four A division, our record is eight and one, and we are the league champions, so that's pretty exciting, and currently in the state playoffs, playing Broome Field on Friday at seven PM, so I'm very, very excited for that. And our very own kicker, Rhett Armstrong, just took, just made a record in Colorado history for most points scored as a kicker.
Nice.
All right, to also recognize our theater program, as Mr. Schwartz has kind of recognized, our play was Pippin. It was kind of like a play within a play, and it was truly amazing. All of their actors are just really talented and can really sing. It's really crazy, actually. All the work that goes into like the sets and the costumes, it's just, it's truly amazing, and they did very, very well.
Yeah, so we recently had our Harvest of Love Week. This week is centered with student council, centered for the student body to make Council, centered for the student body to make donations. So, Student Council members are out there at 7:00 AM in the mornings, holding buckets for students to donate money in. And then on our Wednesday, every week, on the Harvest of Love Week, we have a pancake morning. So, Student Council members get there super early in the morning. We start making pancakes and we sell them for $2. And this year, we raised a total of $2,555 as well as an array of canned goods and food for Harvest of Love.
Excuse me. One of our missions that we've been trying to accomplish as a team is trying to bring the school spirit up in the school. And so, these are some pictures from our football games. And we've seen a lot of, our freshman class mainly has been really participating more than previous years. And we just really want to keep the spirit up because it's a lot of fun when people like dress up and go to the sporting events, not just football, but other games as well. And so, we're seeing a very big improvement in that this year, which we're very excited for.
Yeah, just tagging along to the school spirit is our homecoming. Just wanted to give you guys a quick update on how that went. So, we have our homecoming week with specific spirit days and assembly, and then the homecoming dance. And that was very, very successful this year. It's one of the best I've personally been to. The assembly was super awesome. And as Kenna was saying, our spirit has just increased so much. I think our philosophy is that high school can be as fun as you want to make it. And people and students are really working hard to make it fun. And it makes it fun for everybody. As you can see in some of the pictures here, we have our specified student sections in the assembly. This is from the homecoming assembly where we have a specific game that students can participate in. We have a cheer performance. And we have student section versus student section, spirit chants, which is always fun. And seniors took that. So, that's good.
All right. So, both of us are going to talk about this. But recently, we've been, we made a big change and we introduced painted parking spots. So, from an outside kind of student outlook, we've been trying to do this since my, since our freshman year. So, four years. And before that, too, they've been wanting to do, get this done. And it's just a really big thing to finally be able to have this because it was so much fun being able to paint, even though it was really cold. That Hot Wheels one is actually mine because it's a joke of my car. But it's a lot of fun. Like, it's really interesting to see all the differences between different painted parking spots. As you can see, two girls did like a matching parking spot. And it's just really cool to see people's creativity come out with something that they can kind of make unique to themselves.
Yeah. So, as Kenna was saying, this is something we've been trying to implement for the past few years. And recently, I, along with our Voices of Change Club that we have in Palmer Ridge, worked with administration to organize and create a contract for students. And so, we have an upper lot and a lower lot for our students. The upper lot is designated for the students who have the top 25 GPAs in the class. And every single one of those students had an opportunity to paint their spots as an accolade for their achievements. And in the lower lot, we had a lottery system with students who could paint their parking spot. And so, people would enter $5, say they'd be entered into the lottery, and then would be picked at random. I think this is just such a cool idea. And as a mission to raise school spirit, it's really worked. It's, people see these parking spots and they say, hey, I want to be a part of this school. And I think it's just super awesome. And I'd like to thank administration and security for working hard, as long with Student Council for putting in hours and work with administration to bring this change.
I do want to add one more thing with this. Also, for the top lot spots as well, it really brings more motivation for the underclassmen to really work hard with their grades, too, to be able to get to the upper lot. Because as Sean said, it's only the top 25. And I believe it's three athletes, that letter, three? Yeah.
Yeah, it's three, three letter athletes.
Yeah, so three letter athletes. And so, it really just brings even more motivation for students to work hard and not just like, obviously to have a good GPA and like set yourself up for college, but also it's like, get to paint a parking spot. How cool is that? Come on.
Yeah, that's about it for us. We would like, again, to thank you, all of you for having us. And that's just life at PR recently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, stay there. Do you guys have any questions for our students right now while they're on the spot? I have a question.
Yeah.
If I park in your spot after school, is that okay?
It's totally okay.
That's not true.
Yeah, security will ticket you.
Thank you so very much.
It's a great revenue generator, Dr. Franks.
That's another benefit.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, next is B5, our superintendent's update. And Dr. Dattery, the floor is all yours.
Thank you. Ms. Wood is pulling up the slide deck. And there's, there's many great things going on around the district. And I'm just going to share a few. And a few were shared already, so I will just go through that more quickly. But I, it's just such a pleasure to be able to work alongside all of our adults and, to work with you all as kids. You make us so proud. And I think you'll see that not only in the presentation you shared with us tonight, but in just a few more things that I want to share with you. And first, I wanted to start out, on November 11th, our schools honored so many of our veterans. And across the district in numerous different programs, we invited veterans to participate in special events. And our staff and our students enjoyed truly having our veterans among us and thanked them for their service to our country. So, it was just a wonderful day. Some of the, some of the presentations were going to happen on the Friday before, which was a snow day, as you all know. And everybody just was flexible and moved all the days, all of the programs to the 11th. It was a truly wonderful day. And then, as Mr. Schwartz mentioned, we had two amazing performances. And both of them happened last week, again, due to the snow. We had SpongeBob and that, it was Lewis Palmer High School students, just absolutely incredible. I heard nothing but good things. And the kids are just so talented. It's truly exceptional. And again, as our kids just shared, Pippin. And these are such great photos, the artistic ability of these kids, the, from the costuming and the choreography and just the singing, the talent. It's just truly exceptional. All of our kids really do an exceptional job. And proud of them. So proud of the work that they did. Takes a lot of time outside of the school day to bring those kinds of productions. So, then turning to our elementary schools, this was very fun. I heard about this. Our sixth grade students at Kilmer Elementary put on their scrubs and reported for surgery on Friday, November 15th. I know. Guests from UC Health visited the school and they provided our students with this hands-on surgical practice. How cool is that? Those kids look so engaged. They practiced CPR on life-size mannequins and learned what to do in a medical emergency. So, what an incredible experience for our students. Loved that. And then back to our high schools. Wow. We have had just incredible dedication from our students in all different sports. And 15 student athletes committed to playing their favorite sport at the collegiate level during the national signing day. This was at both of our high schools this last week. So, a lot was happening in this month of November at our high schools. And here's just a couple of photos from those signing events. And here are all of the student names and, and the sports that they represent and that they will go on to play at the collegiate level. So exceptional. And we're just, you know, so proud of the talent and the dedication that these students not only have displayed in their four years in high school here with us, but also as they move on into college. So, very exceptional. I know, there's lots of names on here. I'll leave it there for just a minute. Even our Gwen McAllister is on there. Yeah. And speaking of sports, D-38 has had quite, you know, to get to that level of having that many of our kids go on and sign on at the collegiate level, it is because of what they do and how they accomplish when they are with us. And we've had a big presence again at the regional and state levels this past month. Here are a few pictures. Sorry, a few of them didn't, didn't come through. But that's from both Lewis Palmer and Palmer Ridge High Schools. And it's just truly impressive how many of our kids represent in all different sports in this fall season. So, I'm looking forward to what's to come in the winter seasons now. Here's a summary of all of our championships from this past fall season. So, once again, just many, many accomplishments. And congratulations to all of our student athletes in these programs from our high schools. So, last, I just want to wrap up with a little, a few kudos for our staff as well as for our parents and our guardians. So, first, I want to start, earlier I mentioned about how we celebrated Veterans Day on November 11th for all of our veterans. But did you know that we have many staff in D-38 who have previously served in the US Armed Forces? It's truly incredible how many of our employees have, you know, transitioned from one noble profession of being in our armed services to another and serving as an educator and here in D-38. And so, we just want to thank all of our staff who have served, all of their names are up here, whether it was in the Air Force, the Army, or the Navy, and just thank them for their service. We are so proud to call them our colleagues. And then this last month, we've received a number of different kudo submissions for staff who are appreciated in their departments and in their schools by other staff members. And it's just really a great way for them just to say thank you and to recognize their colleagues. So, to all of these staff members, we say thank you. Your colleagues are grateful to have you on the D-38 team. And then finally, I want to honor our parents. In honor of National Parental Involvement Day, that's on November 21st. I'd just like to say thank you to all of our parents and guardians in D-38 for all that they do for their children. We know that when students have excellent support systems at home, they just do better at school. That is just, that is just something that cannot be overstated. And you make a difference for all of them. We also noticed how so many of our parents recognize our school staff with appreciation lunches, helping in fundraising events, and so much more, helping in the classrooms. We are just so proud of the parent involvement. We thank them. And I thought, what a great way to just say thank you. It's a perfect time on November 21st to thank our parents for all they do and guardians for our students to be successful. And that wraps up our update. And much like you, Ms. Upchurch, just really hope that everybody takes some time this Thanksgiving holiday season to take a break and just enjoy the, enjoy the time with family and friends. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. I really liked the way you said that they go from one noble profession to another. That is pretty impactful. See, I have to write down words, too. Okay. So, we're now moving on to our board discussion items. We'll start with C1, which is our first reading and review of some more G policy revisions. Again, this is just a first reading. These are the redline edits for the policies that are up for review. And our G policies, there's a lot of them. So, there's a lot of work that went into this. And I would like to invite Ms. Alicia Welch up.
I took the long walk up here. All right. Good evening, President Upchurch, members of the board, and Dr. Dattery. So, as you may know, we are reviewing all board policies. A few have significant changes, but the majority of the policy edits really codify changes that are already in practice. Rarely does the change in policy really change the intent. If it does, I will specifically call those things out. All right. So, I am just going to go through a series of them. And then, once I've gone through all of them, you can ask any questions that you have. GBAB, Staff Dress Code. The main changes are, we just wanted to clarify our expectations for appropriate professional dress. Additional details regarding unacceptable clothing items which are inappropriate in cut or have reference to violence, drugs, or gangs. Clarification on exceptions to clothing for physical education, athletic reasons, and uniformed staff members. Just to be clear, if they teach PE, we want them to be able to dress in appropriate clothing for teaching PE. Moving on to GBEE, Staff Use of Technology Resources. Main changes that I wanted to point out to you are that we added language about how the Board of Education supports the use of the Internet and electronic communications to improve teaching and learning. We added language about districts monitoring and reviewing usage on technology and updated the wording about privacy, private records, unacceptable uses, FERPA authorized, FERPA unauthorized content, staff use and warranties, and added social media, a social media section which encourages use for instructional purposes on district-approved applications, but not to be used to connect with students using personal accounts. Moving on to GCO, which is the evaluation of licensed personnel. We clarified on licensed employees who do not have a contract and are considered at-will. And we have an addition of a reporting section that has performance ratings of licensed staff that are to be reported to CDE by October 15th. Policy GCS is professional research and publishing. Minor change, additional language that research topics which need to be studied will be available for staff at the request, if they have a request for any reason. GDBA is Support Staff Salary Schedule. All we did was change the word wage to salary. GDQB, Resignation of Support Staff. We reworded language around providing two weeks' notice prior to resigning. Added language to include students 18 and older involved in unlawful sexual behavior. And removal of language related to not informing the Department of Education when it conflicts with Child Protection Act confidentiality. And there were some additional legal references. GDQD is Discipline Suspension and Dismissal of Support Staff. We added language to include students 18 and older involved in unlawful sexual behavior. We removed language relating to not informing the Department of Education when it conflicts with the Child Protection Act confidentiality. And again, additional legal references. Policy GCQC, which is also GCQD, is Resignation of Instructional Staff and Administrative Staff. All we added was legal reference. GCQF, Discipline Suspension and Dismissal of Professional Staff. There was also an addition of legal reference. And lastly, GDBC, which is Support Staff Supplementary Pay and Overtime. And lastly, there was an addition to legal reference. So, those are the policies that are up for first reading tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
Team, any questions? You sure?
No, just to say I looked through them all and I know I didn't have any questions.
Okay. I actually did have one quick question. And that's, when I was looking through these, a lot of these you can find in, the changes you can find in the CASB database as recommended changes in most school districts across the state. So, I understood where we were following those. My one question was, when we're doing our policy revisions and our, and our own policy on policy, BG, as it relates to policy revisions, asking for, to make sure that those that are affected by policy are engaged in the process. So, I was just curious. And I wanted to just put it out there that we are indeed engaging with staff when we look at these policies for this particular set because this is, relates to staff.
Yeah. Thank you for asking that question. I'll just take that. And then you, if you have anything you want to add. So, thank you for asking that, Ms. Upchurch. We, as a team, looked over all of these policies, had some conversation about which ones might more specifically affect staff. And particularly asking our principals to weigh in on some of these, making sure that we are in alignment with not only what is within the legally, making sure that we're in alignment, and with some of the legal references, but those that maybe changed more specifically, such as the staff dress code, asking our principals to make sure that it was also in alignment with the expectations that they currently have in their own, in their handbooks. And then, you also saw some significant, more significant changes in the one around technology resources, Internet Communications Systems, Electronic Communications, that policy of GBEE. And similarly, while we didn't ask principals in that case, but we did talk to our IT experts in the district. And so, Alicia worked with Mr. Mack, our Director of IT, making sure that the, you know, the things, the changes, the recommendations were in alignment and that that made sense for our district. And so, you know, we'll do that throughout the course of doing all of these different board policies, whether it's G policies, I policies, J, so on and so forth. And then additionally, we've talked at our district leadership team, that once these policies have been adopted, any changes by the Board of Education, that we are making sure that we are pushing that out through and with all of our district leadership team members so that they can ensure that all of our, all of our staff are aware of any changes that may be made, even the small ones, even just with legal references, that they are all aware of what those changes are. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate that because I think it's important that our staff know that they have a voice at the table and that we value their input as well in all of this. So thank you for answering that. I was just curious. And dress code is a prime example. When I looked at that, I thought, okay, can we change that a little when it says the exception? For example, on hats, can we make the exception say for special occasions, such as spirit wear as well? Or, you know, something as silly as, I wear my sunglasses on my head all the time, so is there a need to? Just those little things and those little nuances. And so I was curious if the staff, I wanted to make sure that we're empowering their voices in this as well, so.
It's a great reminder. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Our next item, Review and Revisions to Board of Education Director District Boundaries. And I would like to ask Mr. Ridgeway to come up for that one, along with, who else coming up? Melissa! Mr. Ridgeway and Mrs. Andrews is coming up to talk about review and revisions to Board of Education Director District Boundaries. This is C number two.
Thank you. Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer. I'll just, I'll set the table a little bit here for Melissa, she did the, the hard work on this. But just to, and what that means in terms of setting the table is, you know, not many school districts actually have director-boundaryed school districts. Most school districts have at-large seats. Those districts that do have director-boundary districts like we do, we need to periodically revisit the population numbers within those director boundaries so, to make sure that they are as equal as possible. That's one of the requirements of the statute, that once you go to this, this level, that the director districts are as equally defined in terms of population as possible. Even though we only do the census, the full census, you know, at the start of every decade, there are some revisions to population data, and Melissa will be able to tell you more about that, and that will, you'll see that impact in terms of the information that she shows you as to why the numbers have changed since 2020. So that's the setup. I'll, I get to Zoom. All right, so I will sit down.
Sounds good. Honestly, Mr. Ridgeway, you might as well just sit there. I think you're up for the next several of them, so make yourself comfortable.
Yes. All right. So the first thing I wanted to do is show you our current director districts. This is the map that's been hanging on the wall. This is from the 2020 information. And so color-coded, you can see one through five up here. And as we move into the, well, the very bottom section of that, sorry, bottom left corner, this is that population data. And so the demographer at the time went, and we are using population blocks within the census data. And so each director district has a population number. There is a difference from the average, and then you also have the variance. And so we can see that variance is at max like 1% off. And so as we move into the next slide, or presentation. So again, this is taking that very first set of data that we had from 2020, but if you look in the bottom right corner this time. Get in there. And so what we did is that same population data is on the left that we had from the original, but then we have the updated population data. And so the state demographer's office is always looking for ways to improve our census data. And so this year, some of the changes they made is how they're calculating things like the turnover rate of single-family homes, which is an average from the time they pull a permit to six months later versus multifamily homes for 18 months later. And they're also doing things like removing homes that have been demolished out of the data. There's just changes that they make every year to try to make the data more and more accurate. So it is still the 2020 census data, looked at with a little bit different calculations, which gives us the different numbers. However, what we're seeing is in director districts one, two, and three, we have some pretty significant differences. And so the areas that you see in blue, and we're going to go through each one of these throughout this presentation, but the areas in blue were areas of change. And then this one is, yeah, if we go back one, just this is what will look like at the very end when all of those changes have been made. So you can look at your first slide versus this slide and see those differences. So when we're looking at this, actually, I'm going to go back one, and we can look at the variance differences on this. So as we go back into this bottom right corner, the left section of data is those changes that we saw with the updated 2020 information. And then after I've done all of these revisions, and what that puts us again with about a 1% max change or max deviation from average. So it kind of puts us back in alignment with where we need to be. And so I don't think I need to go through with each and every one of these, but to give you an example of what this is doing, at the very top, the left-hand image is what the original 2020 boundary was. The middle image shows the area of change, and the right image is what the new boundary looks like. And so this one, for an example, on this change A, is removing 286 from Director District One and moving into Director District, is that three?
Can I ask a quick question? The little 10 that's in that blue, what does the 10 stand for?
Um, so that, so when I color-code, I'm using GIS, that just tells everything that I'm thinking about changing to stay blue, so that you can see those changes. And so one of the things that makes it very difficult is I wanted to make sure that I don't impact any board member. And so as I'm going through and making these evaluations, we also need to make sure I don't accidentally bump somebody into a different director districts. And so that's why there's sometimes a little bit jagged lines, things, because there's some people that live pretty close to some boundaries. Or in, you know, two in the same boundary, we don't want to do that. And so on the second one, again, we're moving 1,203 from Director District Two and adding them to Director District One. And you guys can just kind of move through those, each and every one of those boundaries.
Mr. Norris is feeling a little stressed here.
I promise, I have you guys all mapped. I will not show that in public. I know exactly where you live, and you still fall within the correct boundary. And if you want to see those up close to verify that, I can show them to you. And so really looking at, again, the data as a whole, we have the original data as compared to the updated 2020 census data, and then the proposed changes to show that alignment with population balance amongst the director districts. Does anybody have any specific questions?
Well, you already answered my big one about how it affects the current board members, so we're good.
Yeah. Go for it.
You, between the two of you, you've done this several times, or you've looked at it several times. This all appears to be logical, fair, equitable, and even, which is the goal of having district representation, right? It's equal representation of an equal set of people. In your history and experience, has, has there been any negatives to making minor adjustments like this? Any gotchas we should be considering?
Yeah, any thoughts?
I don't, I don't, no, I don't know of any negatives. You know, there are districts that have different growth patterns, maybe, maybe growing much more, much more quickly, and so the, the changes can be more dramatic at times, and they may, we may need to time them in, in some times with, with elections because there may be no way to avoid having some, you know, two, two current sitting board members all of a sudden residing in the same district. I don't think we have that risk here like, like other districts do. So fortunately, I think for us, there's really, there's really no, no downside. It's very, I think, helpful and good to balance it out, and of course, that's what we're required to do by statute anyway.
Right. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Norris?
Do we have the authorization to change to an at-large district? Is it beneficial? Would that save effort on your part?
I was thinking about that, too.
It's only by a full vote of the, of the district constituents. That's how we got to the director district model in the first place, and, and so you'd have to put another thing on the ballot for, to basically unwind that and go back to an at-large system.
I always wondered that, how we came to be, so it's a good question.
Yeah, the default, the tall structure in state law is, is five at-large seats. So any district that has changed to a director district model has, has done that with intentionality, working with their community. I don't know exactly when that happened in D-38. It's been there as long as I've, I've been around, but at some point, that was the decision made by the, by the, by the people.
Yeah, and to your question, and to, in addition, there's pros and cons certainly to both systems. And it does just ensure that there is equal representation from all parts. So I think at some point, knowing that we are a tri-lake-city community, that I think they just at some point wanted to make sure there was equal representation, but that certainly is something that, if it was a future will of the board, that it could be entertained in a, in a, that it would have to go to the voters. Yeah.
If I could say one more thing, I think one of the unique aspects about, about the model that we have here is that you have the director district boundaries where, where directors have to reside, but it's still the full district that's voting on all of them. Other districts have the director district boundary, and you're only voting for your district.
That's true.
And so that's, that's kind of, kind of halfway in between the at-large model and the director district model is this, is what we have here. So that everyone's still voting for all the candidates, but the candidates just have to be distributed amongst the district geographically like this.
So my director district is up for election next November. So if there's anybody interested in being in Director District Three, and you want to think about that one, it's coming up sooner than later. I also appreciate that Mr. Norris's little postage stamp is what's always been in Woodmore on this side of I-25, which is, or on the other side of I-25, which has always been a little odd to me. And so now putting Director District One on the east side of I-25 and consolidating that into all those people that are represented in that district, director district makes sense to me personally, but I just get to be a voter next year, so. All right. Any other questions? We will be voting on this in December. Okay, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Ridgeway, why don't you stay put?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Financial Planning and Analysis, this is Agenda Item C3. Oh, I forgot to ask, do our students have any questions for the Director District Boundaries?
No questions from me.
No, I'm good.
So hello, Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer. With the FPNA here, I have a few different things that I've loaded up to, to talk to you about because we've just passed the October count window. And that is, of course, a very significant milestone, or in terms of our annual financial calendar, it really establishes what our student count will be for the School Finance Act, which is taking about funded student count, multiply it by per-people revenue, and getting our total School Finance Act revenue. So it's a really important data set for us. I did load up, I did load up a graph in here later this afternoon that you may not have seen before, and so I apologize for not getting that in there sooner, but this is, this is a way to just depict kind of the last, you know, 10 years or so of, of data of what's happened in total student count, head count. And I'll make some distinction between what is head count and what is funded count here in a bit. But this is the pattern over these years for head count between the blue bar, which is the operated schools, District 38, and the red bars on top being Monument Academies portion. Really, for the, for the entire, with, you know, breadth of this, of this decade, we've been in the 6,000-student range. Always operating within that 6,000-student range. Had a peak where we got close to 6,900 students, and of course, we started at just barely over 6,000 students back in 11 and 12. But our head count variance from, for 24, 25 for this year compared to last year is 16 total students different. So very, very flat. And that's clearly what you see with this graph. You know, the, the lines have, have a small slope to them, both the blue dotted line and the red dotted line, but very, very nominal growth overall, over this time period. Behind, behind that, then we can start peeling back layers and, and ask different questions or look at different versions of it. So let me see what I want to do next. Oh, this, this is the chart that you are used to seeing. Yes, sir?
Can we go back to the beautiful slide you built?
Go back to the first one?
Okay. So just to be clear, the dotted lines are the funded amount?
No, these are student, no, these are head counts. The dotted lines are just the trend. It's just connecting the starting point to the endpoint and just showing the trend over the, over the, over the years.
So just a question, it's a bit of a macro question, but to, to measure real spendable dollars over this time window. So we're looking at roughly 2011 to '24, so 13-ish years, right?
Mm-hmm.
About an 8% growth, net growth rate, right? 6,100 to 6,500, 6,600, about 500 on, on 6,000, right?
Mm-hmm.
So roughly 8%.
Right.
Okay. What was the sum total, I'd be curious, of the dollars funded in 2011, '12 versus 23, '24? And then if we normalize that for inflation, do we have more dollars to spend per student now than we did 10 years ago?
That's a good question. I would have to obviously do some work to get that answer to you. Bet I can do that.
So I'm going to throw a little gauntlet out there for us to take a look at. I'm going to bet, based on trends in the state and education, that's up 20% in real dollars.
Beyond inflation.
I'll bet you a dollar.
You'll bet me a dollar.
We'll have Dr. Daddery be our bookie. What do Robert's rules say about gambling?
No.
No.
I think your board chair says no.
You're out of order.
But my point is this, right? My point is, how are we utilizing increased dollars in real buying power to ensure that our kids have a safer, better education than they did a decade ago, and that they're equally or more competitive in the environments that they go to? Are we being quality stewards of the opportunity to invest more in? That's the rationale behind the question.
Mm-hmm.
So before I make you do work in that area, I'm going to look to the board and ask, and knows an acceptable answer in my humble opinion, is that a worthwhile ask? You have the answer to the question you have? Sure?
I think you'd probably have to be inclusive there for expenses because they've probably gone up more than 20%.
That's why we normalize for inflation.
Yeah.
This is an after-inflation ask.
Well, just to interject on that point, that, that's exactly what I was thinking as well, and that's why I think a lot about a lot of things in rates and volumes, right? You're, you're speaking in particularly into a rate, rate variance because this is the volume variance right here, right? So what has changed in terms of rate on the revenue side? What does that mean in terms on the expense load, in terms of rates and volumes? And the volume, of course, on that is the number of staff. So what was our staffing level in the 11, 12 area versus, versus now 24, 25? So the change in the volume of staff, and then the rate of pay of staff, and then also the, the rate changes for other spends.
That's part of the question.
So it's a, it's a great question. It does get pretty involved pretty quick.
Yep.
Which I like to do that kind of work, but that's why I'm not going to be able to answer it right now.
Yeah, but the, what I'm trying to get to is, do we, in, in raw investing or buying power, do we have more dollars to use now than we did a decade ago to make our kids successful? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah.
And if we do, then we should be proportionally growing our success ratios. Direct dollar-to-success metric, the bigger point is, what are we doing with the extra dollars and what value we're bringing to our customers and our constituents? What are we contributing to the society that we're putting kids into? That's what I'm trying to get to.
So I'd, I'd like to incorporate that early into some of the amended budget conversations we'll have over the next two months, December, January.
That might be a good thing for the FTC, not this time, but next time.
Okay. Sure. Moved on?
Yes.
Sorry for the curveball.
No, I'm just.
That's just your first.
I'm just curious, obviously, success isn't, you can't put a dollar sign on a kid's head, and the rate of inflation of the cost of education has gone up faster than the rate of inflation. Roads, education, things like that. So I would be curious if you can measure that. I don't know how you can.
That's why the question, is we can't use tu, college tuition to measure that because that's really, has its own, they've, they've developed their own set of they've developed their own set of metrics there.
Yes.
Anyhow, I don't want to hijack the conversation. It just, when I saw that, I was very curious to see if we have more investable power than we did a decade ago on a per-pupil basis.
Sounds good.
Okay, sir.
So the next layer that I'd peel back is kind of focusing on this total count of 6,537 and the 16-student variance from last year. And so here is the 16-student variance, and you can see that this data then broken down by school and by grade. Of course, it's not breaking down the variance, just showing you where the raw numbers are for each grade level in each building. So the next, I want to convert into this chart, which is funded student count. So we have the actual bodies, we know how many students are physically in there, but not every student gets funded as a full-time student. Sometimes they are literally part-time students. And in particular, what you see this is with the homeschool program, right? The homeschool program has, back in this chart, 172-student bodies there, but the funded level, they're only going to get funded at about half. So it's 85.5 is the funded student count. There are adjustments that happen in other grades and buildings as well, depending on what kind of programs people are in, that they may get counted less than .5 or less than 1.0. But that is by far the biggest amount of change is what happens with the homeschool program. Also, when we convert into a funded view now, we drop off the preschool numbers, right? Because preschool is no longer part of the School Finance Act. So the headcount, the total headcount numbers are going to include the preschool. Again, if we go back here, you'll see preschool, we had 189 preschoolers this year. You come in here to this funded view and you'll see no preschoolers because they are going to be funded separately through the UPK program. So for the remainder, K-12, then, we end up with this column here of 6,219.3 funded students. And again, I'll contrast that real quick to the total headcount, which is 6,537. You take off that 189 students of preschool and you've got something right around 63.50 to compare to this 6,219. And so again, that biggest difference is what happens with the homeschool student population. But there's other parts of the formula that will change our final funded student count and particularly has to do with whether you are a declining enrollment district. Now, declining enrollment doesn't necessarily just mean year to year. It kind of looks at a five-year window and say, over that five-year window, what is the kind of the best number, the best average funded count? And that gets to, you basically, as a school district, get to count the better of either your current year funded count or your last, the average of your last two, or the average of your last three, or the average of your last four, et cetera. And so what I'm showing here is, you know, this has been euphemistically called the phantom student count. There's been some opinion with that in the past, but that's how I've labeled it here. So what we'll see is our 6,219 total student count will actually be funded at 6,282. So there's two things in play then here, right? There's students that get counted only as half-time. So from our headcount number, we dropped the preschools, all of a sudden, then we're adjusting homeschoolers to half-time and a few other students to half-time, and then we're bringing in this student count averaging concept. And so you end up at this different number of funding, funded students. It's all related, of course, but there's several steps in between. And so it's not always intuitive when you just look at point A to point B, how do we really get there?
So does that get us to a functional number, basically?
That gets us to a functional number. And that's, this is the number from a budgeting perspective that I'm trying to project.
Okay.
What do we end up with in terms of funded student counts? Because then again, that is what's driving the revenue of the district.
That's projected burden, wait, sorry. This year or next year?
This is 24-'25.
Okay.
This is 24-'25. So what is, because this is my projection of it because, again, now that October count is finished from the school district perspective, now CD has to run all of the machinations and all the math for the state as a whole and figure out, okay, what is every single school district's funded student count? What does that mean for the total state? By the time the legislative session then starts, they'll know, hey, our total state funded student count is higher or lower than their budget assumption. What does that mean in terms of how the state then funds each district? Next question.
How close is 6,282 to your estimate?
I will get to that in a second, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Okay, it's been a second.
Time's up.
School Finance Act projection, we anticipated 63-14 in the original adopted budget, so 6,282 is 31 students off. That's one-half of 1%.
What would that be, Dr. Dattery, an A+?
It's pretty, yes, A++ actually.
99.5%?
Yeah, I was pretty darn impressed.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, but I'm also going to show you on my next, I don't know, future slide, how there's some, it's more art than science, I'll say, in terms of that. While I'm on this slide, I'll say that this slide is meant, again, to demonstrate the School Finance Act funding that is driven by this process. You have the highlighted piece here that says this would be the projected amended budget, 67.78 million dollars for the district. And that includes Monument Academy. So to the right there, I break down the operated schools versus Monument Academy, so 55.8 versus 11.9. And then I do basic rate-volume calculations, again, to say, how does that compare to that original budget amount? And so with rate, volume, and mix, these are all important to distinguish the source of the variance, the type of the variance, because as we were just talking about on how we translate that to the expense load, a rate variance in revenue should apply to a rate variance on expenses, a volume variance in revenue should apply to a volume variance on expenses. These are all very, very small numbers, relatively speaking. You know, $100,000 net is 0.2% of total revenue, again, being off from the original adopted budget back in June. There are some swings within, up and down, but still plus or minus $300,000 is still less than a percent variance either way. So we're operating within a pretty tight window in terms of going into that final amended budget season.
You guys following this? That's crazy.
Oh, my gosh. Like, that's crazy.
That means you guys get milk.
I mean, yeah, that's wild.
It's a lot of work behind the scenes, isn't it?
So here's, the next thing I wanted to go into was, again, to talk about this being somewhat of an art, not just a science, is talk about, everyone's always talking, you hear about mobility. You know, and then that's students moving from year to year, moving from one district to another district, moving from one school to another school. That's, it's kind of viewed as a positive thing, but like all good things, there could be too much of it. And so what is really happening with our mobility? And the way I'm kind of reflecting it on this chart here is to talk about what of our student enrollment is predictably matriculated, meaning someone's in a school, going from third grade to fourth grade, year to year, same school, just moving up a grade, even if they're going from elementary school, sixth grade into middle school, seventh grade, that's still predictable matriculation. Because I'm really trying to figure out what's not predictable. What is the mobility portion of it? And so what I'm seeing in here is that of this total headcount that we had, we had 1,200 students that did not provide predictable matriculation, 19% of the total. So let me peel that back a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay? So of that 1,200 students, 1,110, 1,110 of them were new enrollments to the district since last October. They may have enrolled in the spring, they may have enrolled in the summer, they may have enrolled last month. They're new since last year's October count, 1,000 students new since last year's October count. 142 of those, of this 1,252 are transfers, meaning they went from one school to another. Again, that we didn't necessarily predict just from looking at data, if they went from Palmer Lake to Lewis Palmer Elementary or vice versa.
Intra.
Intra district.
Intra, yeah. Now, this new enrollment, we expect a certain amount of new enrollment every year. We're graduating seniors after all, and we're bringing in a new class of kindergarteners, et cetera. And so over here on the right side, I take that 1,110 and I break it down between what's happening with new preschool and kindergarten enrollments. And I'm including preschool because this is headcount base, not the funding student base, so I'm including preschool. So of that 1,100, 376 of those students are new preschool or kindergarten enrollments, which leaves us in the middle there with 734 new enrollments in all the other grades. So that's a lot of churn this year in particular. This is kind of an angle I've wanted to take in analyzing our student count for a while. And so this is kind of my first effort delving into this. And so because this, you know, this is another layer which just gets more questions. Of course, the next question is, well, how does that compare to the prior year? Is 1,110 a high number? Is that a low number? What does it compare to the prior year? I had taken a quick look at just the year prior, but I haven't fully vetted it yet. But I think this is higher than what we experienced last year. Last year, this number was about 800. So it is a fair amount higher this year of new enrollments. But again, remember, we actually went down 16 students from last year to this year. So even though we've ginned, we brought in 1,000 new enrollments, we lost 1,000 prior enrollments. Now, 600 of those were seniors last year. So that was somewhat expected. We brought on, brought on a lot of new students, of course, but we just not, we didn't fully replace that senior class in the end is what it says, right? If we're down 16 students overall, that means we lost our new enrollments, you know, which ostensibly would be kindergartners and preschoolers, but because we're in a more dynamic community, a more transient community, where people are moving in, people are moving out, people have choice, right? Out-of-district choice, inter-district choice. All of this is happening, which creates kind of the herding cats scenario for me to say, what is our budget going to be for enrollment? There's some art to it and there's some science to it.
The other piece is the operational side, right? So as, not for this school year, but for the upcoming school year, if roughly 19% are not predictable and in play, that's significant enough for us to burn some agility into our model. Right? Because that means one in five is in play, so to speak, right? It's a bit of a wild card. And so the more we can do things like, for example, what Ms. McAllister's doing in the CT Center, make it fully agile, right? So that as these ads moves and changes happen, because we can control some things, but we can't control the macro things happening around us, which is what you're depicting here.
Exactly.
Right? So it's yet another case for us to ensure that whatever we do in operations, that we strongly consider agility as a core tenet.
Which is part of the reason why I direct us toward a student-based budgeting model going forward, because that increases our agility to be reactive to exactly what happens to us instead of creating things that are more static, systems that are more static, structures that are more static, being able to react on a more immediate basis.
What Mr. Frampton said about homeschool enrichment in our session last week would really resonate based on this data, would be incredibly credible, right? Find us something that's very agile, that maybe is commercial, that has plumbing, that we can work everything else around it. So this really validates that position as an example.
Question?
Yes.
So we're seeing across Colorado and across the United States right now, a birth, what do they call that, a birth bust, where we're seeing declining birth rates? And that means you're going to see a decline in enrollment in preschool, kindergarten. Does that affect to, I'm going to, I'm going to use my inner Mr. Schwartz. How does that affect education programming, like reading? For, what is it, kindergarten through third grade, you read, you learn to read, and third grade and up, you read to learn. So does the declining birth rate have any negative or positive or net-neutral effect on students as they're going into our schools and learning to read and having to change or adapt to the programming?
That sounds like a question for educators. I'm the chief business officer.
Noted. I can ask that later. I just started making the cog's turn, so, okay. And then my one question that you might be able to answer is with the, and this is why I asked if this is 2024 and 2025, which if I had read, I could have seen that, but I didn't read.
Okay.
They're talking, the state's talking about changing from the average, the enrollment average of, what is it, three to five years to doing a yearly average. Is that, could that negatively affect D38?
It could, yeah. So the governor's budget proposal that he puts, you know, he's required by law to put forward at the beginning of November every year for the coming fiscal year, that was kind of an out-of-left-field proposal that he threw in there, which was to eliminate student count averaging. That's been a topic of conversation for a lot of years. I myself have engaged on that quite a bit over the years to, you know, with the opinion that a five-year window is really a little bit too long. You know, you should be able to adjust and react to your current reality quicker than a five-year window. That's me coming from the business side of, you know, I'm not the educator, so there's definitely, you know, other opinions about that. So I think that was kind of a shot across the bow to say that, hey, student count averaging may be in play where it hasn't been in play in past years. So that would have to do, if I come back to this chart, it would have to do with that amount of phantom students that could potentially decrease this number for us if it went to a smaller window. It probably wouldn't have as much effect on us as it does for districts that are in seriously declining enrollment, if you think about a school, a district like D11, right? That, they topped out somewhere close to 40,000 students once upon a time, and now they're in the mid-20s, right? They've had a huge slope of decline over the years. And so declining enrollment has been a big part of their revenue stream for a lot of years. And if you start to change that, it's really going to have a big effect on districts like that and a lot of urban districts really in general is kind of where the issue is really going to be felt most. It's going to be felt a little bit here for us, but nothing like it'll be felt there.
Okay.
Great question.
Any other questions before we allow Mr. Ridgeway to move on?
Have I reached the saturation point yet? No? Keep going?
I'm just getting warmed up, sir.
Just a couple more things, if I could.
Yes, please.
I know I'm on a tight, how long's it been, Alicia? No. See, golly. All right. So again, I usually like to refer to this, a couple pages here in the regular financial package, and those being in particular to go to the graphical presentations where I've spent a lot of time, and I want to continue to spend a lot of time emphasizing the impact of Senate Bill 2417 on our funding stream. And as I mentioned last time, I know this is a very busy chart here on the bottom half here, but this is our general fund cash position by month, which over time then means it's our cash flow pattern. The solid red line is kind of the new slope of cash flow based on how the new School Finance Act funds after that bill was passed last session. That green dotted line here is that old pattern. And so we had a much steeper use of funds through, into the February trough, and then a much steeper build of funds out of the February trough traditionally in past years. So we're moving to this shallower pattern of the solid red line that we are eventually going to shift to the dotted red line when we are ready to make that step and start spending money for the Career Innovation Center. Right now, the $8 million that I've talked about frequently, that is going to be the big portion of that funding is still sitting here, and that's the difference between what's sitting here on this orange line, orange bar and between those two red lines. Pretty much here in December or January is when that money is going to move out into the project fund and then being spent in earnest in that way. And all of a sudden, we'll drop to the red line, dotted red line pattern for the rest of the year. And if I could just show you one more thing, well, in terms of how we're doing so far year-to-date, you know, through October, we're here, we're a third of the way completed. If I look at the total spend for the District General Fund, according to the budget, we're at 33.6%, when we're 33.3% of the year through. So we're really tracking really well on total budget for the general fund as well. And then the last thing I wanted to draw your attention to that I've been wanting to show you for quite a while here is the per-pupil views that I've had here in the reporting for quite a while, but we've never really drawn attention to it. And since we just mentioned student-based funding and student-based budgeting here, I want to just bring your attention to these slides that have been in here for all these months. And what this does is take the... the, the school-by-school results, and this is the total cost of each school up here on the top, and it's by program across, across the top until you get to the total over on the far right side. And, but down here in the second half section is taking that total dollars, dividing it by student count and saying, here's the per-student spend for the budget. Now, student-based budgeting is not going to look at this and say, hey, each of these numbers need to be exactly the same. It's going to say, when these numbers are different, do we know exactly why they're different? And is that an acceptable reason for that difference? Again, I would, I would have moved us to a student-based budgeting model already. The reason I couldn't is because the answer to that question is, was no, we didn't have good reasons why they were different, and we needed to take time to try to migrate in that direction because we didn't want to just break anything by flipping a switch.
Thank you for not breaking things.
So, so again, so this, this gives you some perspective. I mean, you know, there, there, these aren't horrible differences. You think about $8,700 is the top number and $6,600 is the, as the bottom number. That's $2,000 per student, but it's $2,000 per student, you know, could be over the course of several hundred students. So it can add up. But again, there might be good reasons for it. There might be special education in play in buildings, in certain buildings, and it's not in play in other buildings. So there are good reasons for differences, and that's part of what this will be. So a student-based budgeting isn't just taking a literal approach to it. It's also preceded by what I call a normalization process, which identifies these things, quantifies them, and then makes a, makes an, a result.
Gives them an associated weight to be measured against.
Yes.
It provides them associated weight to be measured against.
Mm-hmm.
So that you can begin to analyze what, what's the art of the practical versus just the art of the possible and put this into practice. So my question is, this has got several degrees and of complexity as well as depths of complexity with respect for the quantity and complexity of that and with remembrance of the quantity and complexity of the salary table, which you were able to slay and fix. How long? How much and how many?
I'm sorry, that question is too generalized. I can follow.
All right. How long, how long till we have a reasonable view of what the various items are that are causing the differences and what type of weight would be in practice the right to assign to them such that we didn't break something unnecessarily and cause collateral damage?
So, you know, I'll be, I'll be, you know, I'll be re-quantifying the differences, the discrepancies as I did for this 2425 budget. There was actually a page in the budget package that, that demonstrated the issues. And, and so I'll be re-quantifying that and seeing, because we then, we've been having, you know, just, just the general conversation with principals and say, hey, you know, this is where, what we're seeing. So this may be where we're heading. Be thinking about this with a long lead time about how, you know, how changes might be made. And so we'll be re-quantifying that as we go into the 2526 budget cycle and seeing, you know, how close can we get? Can we get to the point where we can flip the switch, or is it still going to take us another year to make some more moderate intentional changes before we can really get to that point?
So that was the second half of my question. And it sounds like you are, as a leadership team already there, is, I don't know if you've experientially been through this or not yet, or maybe Dr. Dattery has in her history, because a lot of the other one, other districts have always been at student-based budgeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Change like this, is, is it beneficial in terms of less disruption and more productivity to do it in an evolution, or is it more beneficial to do it and flip the switch?
Well, it, it will, you, you get into this type of environment once it's matured and there is more what would appear to be volatility year-to-year, but really it ends up being more closely tied to what we actually see in the demographics, what's happening with our student count. And so that volatility is actually more just volume variance playing out in the budget. So, but getting to that point does take, does take some time. And so yes, this is, this is exactly a path that I've walked before. And I think we have to, we have a little bit more complexity than what I've seen before because we have such a, a wide range, especially in our elementary school populations. When you have one school with 800 students and two other schools with less than 300 students, that's a wide, wide disparity. And so it's, it, it creates, it, it creates the need for us to be probably a little bit slower, a little bit more intentional on how we manage that process. If they were closer together, it would, it would, it would come and wash out a lot quicker.
Okay. Thank you.
Now we're saturated, right? That's enough financial information. Any questions? Do you guys like Excel?
Team?
You're an engineer. You should love this, right?
[laughing]
Although you're going to Arizona State, but whatever.
[laughing]
And you're an alumni of?
University of Arizona.
[laughing]
That explains quite a bit.
Uh-huh.
So did you look at this, just go to the last slide, not to oversaturate my peers here. Did you look at this also, it looks like, on an FTE basis as well as a per-student basis? Have you done the same analysis on an FTE basis?
Between staffing FTE? Not that I'm publishing. I do have some of that in the background, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments, team? I know this is a heavy saturation, and it always is in November, and then we get to go into December and have even more deep dives, so.
Right, because we get to talk about millet certifications.
Yep.
Yay.
[laughing]
And I understood.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ridgeway.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are moving on to Section D, which is D1, and I'm going to re-invite Ms. Welch to come up. And this is our final reading, our second reading, and vote for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, oh, 10.
Yeah, it's 13.
Thank you. Should have just waited for you to get up here.
Yeah. And 10 that I did before. Are you wanting me to go through them like I did with the last group?
Um, I don't know that we necessarily need to unless the board, it pleases the board. No? Okay, well, Mr.?
The only question I would have is, are there some changes to one of them based on my feedback? Were there changes to any others from what we read on the first reading?
No. The only one we made changes to was GBEC alcohol and drug-free workplace. We were just waiting on an update from our attorney to get some final feedback and made adjustments accordingly.
Do, for Ms. Upchurch, is that something where we have to start the first and second reading process again, or do we just accept the changes?
Um, as far as the red line?
Yeah, there was one update made since the first reading.
Okay.
That's the point of, of having these policies, for you to have then discussion, make any recommendations, and then we bring them back to you in a final form based on those recommendations or any other legal. Yes. So no, that is all part of the process of that first and then second read.
Yeah.
Yes, very good.
We could in the future, obviously not tonight, but we could always, as a board, if we wanted to look at having the newer red line version to be seen, not that we need to re-go through first reading again, but to do, just to see what changes. Um, when we did.
I think that one was communicated out to everybody anyway, so I think we're, we're good.
It was. Yeah, yes, we could.
But one of the times, some of the times I see, like, when we did this with CASB, we had almost like a Google Doc where we were able to make our, our changes, edits on the sidebar as we were going through to see who suggested. But your suggestions were pretty spot-on, so that's what I was going to suggest, too, so.
Sounds good.
And so now what we're looking at right now in the public content is the cleaned version of all edits and changes.
Yep, that is correct.
I will entertain a motion.
I have it.
[laughing] Because I had it for a while.
Ms. Upchurch, I'd like to make a motion to approve revisions to the G policies and any corresponding regulations as presented.
I'll second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve revisions to the G policies and any corresponding regulations as presented. Is there any discussion? Tough crowd. All right. Ms. Wood.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Dr. Shank.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch.
Aye. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up is D2, Career and Innovation Center course approvals. And we would like to invite both Ms. Wetstein and Ms. McAllister to the podium and share with us. And I think Mr. Edwards is with us as well.
I saw him as well. I just saw him.
Good evening. We are excited to give you a standing update on the progress with our Career and Innovation Center. And with that, Ms. McAllister and Mr. Edwards will be sharing some new course proposals that will accompany our work with the Career and Innovation Center.
Okay, let me get the slides pulled up here. There you go. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for having us again tonight. We're just always so blessed to be able to come and present with you some updates. And we are happy to announce that we have approached our first major set of deadlines. And so we're going to be talking about that a little bit today. By deadlines, I'm going to revisit the screen that you see in front of you now, which is the timeline we've been marching through. So you'll see kind of a cluster occurring in the space that we're in, which is in the middle of November at the November board meeting, where we're here to discuss some course proposals that we have. So moving forward, I will just remind everyone that we did have a discussion a little bit at the board retreat, and we spoke about a phased approach that we're looking into as far as the delivery of the programming that we're going to be having. And the, the conversation on the phased approach will continue into the, the courses as well. So just as a reminder, we are, from analysis that we've completed so far with both the construction costs that we are now aware of, as well as the programming pipeline that we know we need to build, which we're going to talk about in just a moment, we know that the first phase of programming that we'll be offering in the new Career and Innovation Center is going to be that of manufacturing, skilled trades, and engineering. And then coming after that will be Phase Two, and that will be the areas of healthcare and information technology, computer science. So in the board packet, you have seen that 10 of the 13 course approvals that you'll be looking at today, and that's what we're going to be talking about right now, really have to do with the CTE, Career and Technical Education expansion into the Innovation Campus. So real quickly, I'd like to draw your attention to the graphic on the right of the slides right now. And that is really a model that we are following, we developed, and we're going to be marching through as we continue to build pipelines. So reminding everyone in the room that we're really intentional about not only serving students in the high school area, but also building a pipeline where students at the younger grades get to experience some of this learning as well, so that then they can expand it when they get to the ages where that would be appropriate for them to do so. Looking at the, the key on the left, you will see in the upcoming slides that there are courses that have different boundaries around them. The borders are different. So if it is a, a black border, that is an existing course in some of our pathways. If the border is yellow, that's just a modified course. That's a course that we currently offer, but that's changing in as much of a way as we felt like we needed to bring it forward tonight. If it is a green border, then that's talking about an intended course that we do hope to deliver into the 2526 school year. The red border is a potential course. So in the spirit of agility, we wanted to have some courses kind of on backup that we could go back to should the interest of our students arise. And then anything that's kind of encapsulated in a dashed line, that's something that we're thinking about for the future. So again, our purpose tonight is just to present some course approvals to you, some proposals that have been built over time through that insight acquisition campaign. So just as a quick reminder, we met with Dr. Tatiana Bailey back in June. We learned all about the data forecast, the economic trends, and we've been working with industry partners and post-secondary partners ever since to really define these courses. I'll also say that the, the approval that we may or may not receive tonight is really just an expression to get them into our course guides for November and December for students to register and then into Infinite Campus. And there are other processes that come into play into the spring, but this is just to get them into Infinite Campus. So the very first progression I'd like to share with you is that of advanced manufacturing. You will see, again, kind of that key if you can go back to it. We do have green encapsulate, or robotics encapsulated in a green border. That's a class that we already have at the middle school. It's just a class that we haven't been able to offer for several years because we haven't been able to find the staffing. We are now going to have a concerted effort to try and meet that need moving into the spring semester. Intro to welding is encapsulated in yellow. We already have a metal working class. We're just now going to be calling it Intro to Welding and then updating some competencies based off of the learnings that we've had with some of our industry partners through that insight acquisition campaign. And then expanding, again, an intended course would be to expand that learning into a welding technology, 1A and 1B course. Moving into our computer science programming, you'll see a lot of courses that we already have in this program and then also some future desired again, encircled in the dashed line. Really, we have the PLTW Computer Science Essentials. That is another change. Right now, we call that course Coding II. Again, it had just enough of a change that we felt it was important to bring it to you. And then we have an AI and Data Science course in red and a Computer Networks course in red. And those are for future desires as we continue to build this pathway. Moving into the engineering pathway, again, you'll see robotics I've just spoken about in green at the middle school level. And then we are hoping to advertise to our students in electronics, engineering, and manufacturing course. You'll see, again, we already have Project Lead the Way Civil Engineering and Architecture. We have Engineering Design and Development and PLTW Aerospace, which we plan to continue launching for our students. In red, you will see a semiconductor engineering, manufacturing, and a small unmanned aircraft, and they are red, again, because we are hoping to deliver those in future years as part of an expansion program. And healthcare. So, and within our healthcare pathway, you'll see we have a green course, and that is, again, the green border just talks about how we'd like to offer that course into the upcoming school year, again, to build the pathway specifically at Palmer Ridge High School. As you know, we have the Biomed Program at Lewis Palmer High School that will feed into the, into the Career Event, Career and Innovation Center when we go into that phase of having healthcare there. And we'd like to, to build something similar over at Palmer Ridge High School to give those students those opportunities. And the last one is skilled trades. We are not proposing any new courses for skilled trades at this time. We do have some future plans, again, in communication with some of our industry partners and post-secondary partners. But for this, for this stage, we're just planning to bring over the, the capstone class, which is really the home build. So that really ties in some of the courses that we're asking you to approve, again, of the 13 that you have in front of you. 10 of them are CTE courses, but not all 10 are intended to be offered next year. They're intended to build upon this pipeline and to help us continue to grow and develop and learn as we continue through that insight acquisition path, process. So on the screen you'll see in front of you now, I mentioned earlier, the Phase One approach is that of bringing on advanced manufacturing, which is welding, engineering, and skilled trades into this upcoming year, and then doing some analysis. I just looked through some, some statistics that we have right now. So currently, in our welding courses, we have 67 students.
Wow.
So that isn't to say that we'll be bringing 67 into next year, but what I will say is historically, we've had to turn students away from welding, and that is only programming that we offer at Lewis Palmer High School. And so we're, we're very excited to bring that over into the Career Innovation Center. I will also say that Lewis Palmer High School only offers welding as a one semester class in the spring semester. So you can imagine what those numbers could potentially be when we open up to Palmer Ridge students and when we offer it as full-year courses. So we're excited about that. Engineering, if you were to look back at the progression, you'll see we had, we have students taking a class called Introduction to Engineering Design and Principles of Engineering. When I look at those courses, we have 61 students in those courses right now who would be ready to take these courses, you know, the expansion of courses over at the Career and Innovation Center. And then skilled trades, we currently only have Carpentry Technology II that is happening at Lewis Palmer High School, and there are 13 students. We do anticipate having more students over at Palmer Ridge High School who'd be interested in coming over for the home build as well. I will say, of course, the complexity of scheduling comes into play. I'm sure you've had to make some difficult choices as far as courses that you've wanted to take before. And at times, there's a conflict between a course they might want to take at the Career and Innovation Center, and of course, it's only offered during that time at the high school. So, so these aren't solid numbers. We'll continue to watch them grow. But just to give an, an example of what we could be anticipating as we move into the process, which you'll see on the screen there now. So after tonight and into December, my work will really surround getting all of these courses into course guides so that they're published and students can make intentional decisions. And then also working with the communications department to really. decisions, and then also working with the Communications Department to really craft some marketing material. We then will start marketing and outreach in January. Course registration happens in February, and then, of course, we'll start to really look at numbers and make some intentional staffing decisions in March. So, that is what I have for you, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Edwards, so that he can share a little bit with you where we're at with grants and partnerships.
Thank you. So, I believe at your retreat, you saw a glimpse of the partnership packet. And I will say, at the high level, it's kind of an exciting adventure for us, that we are sharing not only our vision and direction and what we want to do with the CTE Innovation Campus, but we're ready to talk about costs with commercial partners, as well as other grant programs, and how we can align those to funding this really innovative opportunity in front of us, and ultimately impacting the students, giving them opportunities to learn and grow in ways that we haven't offered here in this district, and in ways that are not offered in other neighboring districts in El Paso County. So, it's fairly exciting. I'll just bring it to high level here, or talk about it. You know, the legacy is kind of our top category for sponsor levels. Again, this talks more to the corporate sponsorships, and catalyst is reduced amplifier as well. The top three have naming rights. We've talked through this as a possibility, where we can name the building, we can name a wing of the building, whether it is engineering, advanced manufacturing. And that's real important. Last week, I was in Huntsville, Alabama, at a Workforce Development Conference for Electronics Sector, and I got to visit one of these schools. I also got to see some of the NASA facilities that have sponsored by Boeing, or sponsored by some of the defense companies. And it's really neat to see that. Companies love that talent pipeline. They love the advertisement amongst the students and the community members. And so, by us building this structure and a sponsored packet, I think it's going to go many, many miles in front of us. So, we still have a lot of work to do on engagements with the community. But let me share with you a picture of what that looks like. These are just some of the funding pursuits that we've decided to, I guess, begin our engagements. Most of them listed our grant programs with either the federal government, or the CTE Perkins Grant, which many of you are well-informed on. And there's certain amounts of funds that are possible. The larger grant programs will, say, affect the region. So, we have to actually construct that in a way that we're partnering with industry, neighboring districts, the community college systems, and even the four-year colleges in that. And that really says, hey, what we're doing here in D38, we're having regional and national impact. And so, that's what we plan to construct in these grant applications. The last one, though, I'll highlight just very briefly, is again, that corporate partnership. What we've learned in our Insight Acquisition is that the regional corporations are the ones that are pulling the workforce, and they have the workforce needs. We've looked at the statistics and the data. We have projections for what's happening now, as well as in 10 years. And really, they have to be key partnerships, but they also have to come to the table with funding, in-kind resources, a lot of other elements to make this happen. And so, we're going to, very soon, start engaging a number of companies that we've had preliminary discussions with, but we want to get down to the details. How do we make this happen? How do we support their needs with our education programs? And how can they also partner with us in ways that we can not just offer knowledge, but really enhance the knowledge, skills, and abilities for our students, so they are workforce-ready by the time they graduate, if not before? So, I think that's the last slide. Open up for questions.
Questions? Do our student representatives have any questions or thoughts about this?
I just want to say thank you for being able to, like, offer this to all the students, because I think it's going to really, I think, help maybe some students find their passions. Because like, I know for me, I didn't find out, like, I have a passion for cars. And I didn't find that out through school, but I did take Intro to Engineering, and I know it really helps spark people, students' interests. So, I think all of these courses are going to really help students kind of find where they maybe want to go in the future, and it'll help set that up for it. So, thank you.
Yeah, just kind of reiterating what Ken was saying there. Specifically, at Palmer Ridge, we really only have woodworking and Intro to Engineering. And so, having this designated building for more trades, such as the medical and more welding, that type of thing, I think is, like Ken said, is going to spur people on towards more of, hey, I want to do this in life, and this is kind of what I want to actively pursue in college, past a class like calculus or biology. I think it's just a super cool opportunity, just in general.
I know you have things.
My first thing is not a question, it's a thank you to all of you. It's a lot of work, and you have day jobs, too. But this is a big one, right? And the data that Ms. Wetstein has brought to us over the last several years about our matriculation rates has made it clear, and similar to what Mr. Ridgeway was showing, what's happening around us drives how we work and what we do. And what's happening around us is that the companies that 20 years ago demanded a degree are not. But they are demanding quality employees with a degree of experience, and that makes our kids very competitive. If three out of 10 aren't matriculating to further education, then it's incumbent upon us to provide that foundational element so they can matriculate into being part of the society they choose to be. So, making this happen really matters. Secondly, just a quick tactical question on the data table with the grants. The dollar numbers, was that the total available dollars in the entire pool of the grant? Or was that the amount that we are trying for?
You know, that's per potential grant application. So, I know you're aware of some of the federal grants that you've been engaged with in your career, but, for example, the National Science Foundation, Experiential Learning, they have $30 million that typically is applied to that program from year to year. And the maximum per grant is $1 million. So, it'll vary a little bit, but these are the targets, the top, the maximum amount offered per grant application.
Okay, thank you. And the other important thing, just for the public, if anybody's listening, I know a lot of the folks that are in the room come to a lot of our meetings. What we're doing here is not new, and we are actually behind the eight ball from a competitive position versus other places in the state, and certainly the country. But the methodology and the manner in which we're doing it, and the things we are offering, is innovative. And to Nathan's point, I just want to accentuate for everybody that may be viewing this later on, is if we can differentiate ourselves amongst our peers because of the way that we're providing coursework, education, and industry-ready graduates, then the employers will come to us. So, thank you for thinking that way.
I just wanted to say I enjoyed reading the course descriptions, and sorta made me want to go back to high school. Because I would like to take a bunch of those.
I was thinking the same thing. There's a lot of fun-looking courses in there. I could have a lot of fun there.
Exactly.
I would say, as we think about funding, you know, and being a community innovation center, we also are thinking through, how do we train our community members, upskilling? And that's a very important topic at the national level on some of the communities I'm engaged with, too. So, stay tuned for that.
I'm excited to hear it.
Well, Mr. Norris saw me pull out my visual. I'm just, I'm going to bring this out every time, because, and for our students that haven't seen this, this is the work that has gone into this since I've been on the board since 2000, well, just before I got on the board in 2017. And this is all community engagements, data, from Portrait of a Graduate, to Elevate and Engage Meetings, to survey after survey, that show that this community values the importance of ensuring that our students are future-ready through Career and Technical Education. And again, it does not replace the pathway to college. It enhances the pathway to college, but it's not the only pathway to college. And I'm going to, again, I'm going to use my inner voice that has been heard from Mr. Schwartz many times before, and that is that our country matters, and our youth is 17% of our population and 100% of our future. See, I remembered it. So, I, yes, so I'm, this is exciting to me, and something that I noticed on there that I'm going to plug in before, instead of doing it during discussion, that I'm going to put a plug in before we do a motion and vote. I love seeing AI and Data Science on there, and this is why it is here. And a lot of folks aren't talking about it, especially in our smaller school districts. Other school districts across the state and across the nation are recognizing it. And we have two choices. We can either put our head in the sand, and it'll run us over, or we can make sure that we are being a part of the conversation and making sure that whatever that looks like, that it's being done responsibly. And I can't think of another, a better way than to have our D38 students directly engaged post-secondary in that discussion. Because it's, we talk about it on what does that look like in our classrooms, and I know that this is just a course, but this is going to be a bigger discussion that we, as a community, are going to have to start thinking about and engaging in as well. Or, again, we're going to get left in the dark, and our students are not going to get the education that they so deserve. So, thank you for bringing that particular class. Appreciate that.
Maybe one other item, in the spirit of being redundant, but it's so important, the two things. How many incremental taxpayer dollars were used to fund this?
No additional taxpayer dollars.
And how were we able to free up the money to be able to do this, then?
Brett wrote a bill.
And because Brett wrote a bill and it passed, we get to write a check without a penny coming...
So, we were able to free up one-time money that we would otherwise not be able to use to support our students. So, we are just thrilled that this opportunity became available. And really, this, to Ms. Upchurch's point, this was an opportunity that has been some time coming, that the community has asked us to deliver on.
And how many other districts in the state of Colorado were able to build one of these without extra taxpayer dollars?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Who would entertain a motion?
Ms. Upchurch, I'll make a motion to approve the Career and Innovation Center course proposals for the advanced manufacturing, computer science, engineering, and healthcare fields as presented.
Seconded. There has been a motion to approve the Career and Innovation Center course proposals, and seconded? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Wood.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Dr. Schenk.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch.
Hi. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your support. And I know there's lots more work ahead, so.
Keep on keeping on.
Keep it on, keep it on. Thank you. Okay, D3. Mr. Ridgeway. I told you just to stay here and get comfortable. Thank you, sir.
Someday, I might take it too literal.
We should pay you per moment on the mic, huh?
Sir.
Are you introducing the topic, or am I introducing?
I would like to call Mr. Ridgeway to the podium to discuss the lease purchase terms being presented to the Board for approval for the Jable Building.
Thank you. Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer. It is fun to have this item right after, you know, hearing Jessica and Amber and Nathan talk about what's really going to happen in this building. And my role is just kind of to be the enabler, to try and create that opportunity for this to happen. And, you know, I think we've been talking about agility a little bit, a little bit here this evening, and I remember a book study that we did 10 or more years ago in a prior district about creating innovators, and what, you know, one of the topics of that that really stuck with me was about organizational agility. And that's really what, the whole point of this structure in terms of acquiring the building is about, is maintaining our agility as long as we can. You know, when we are able to finance something at 5%, and we also can invest money and get earn 5%, that's arbitrage. And so, we're being able to balance that, gives us the opportunity to create, to push our agility and to push our decisions out further, without having any real detrimental cost to the organization. So, what I bring to you here tonight is something that we originally intended to do a couple months ago, but we ran into a couple hiccups and had to kind of reformat and bring some different legal expertise into the conversation here. And so, we have this lease purchase agreement that we're presenting to you in terms of how we intend to acquire and finance the building. And it's done as a lease purchase agreement, again, rather than as a debt agreement, because that is the opportunity that's available to us under the Tabor Amendment. Multi-year debt agreements require specific voter approval, no matter what they're for. And so, a lease agreement is not a multi-year debt agreement, because it's subject to annual appropriation. Now, the reality of how they play out, you know, usually is not that literal, but technically and legally speaking, that's how they're defined. And so, bringing this forward as a lease purchase agreement gives us that opportunity to acquire the building, to outfit the building, and remodel it for the things that we need, and also do some of the other things that we have around the district. And again, allows us to extend that timeline for how these decisions play out. So, there's a lot of legalese in this. These two documents are drafted by lawyers, so they're long and complex. But essentially, what that says is that the seller will be working with us to lease us this building while we build it out, while we get our programs in there and settled. And then, at some point, we'll have the option to formally purchase the building at that time, and that will be our exclusive option for that to happen. So, all this is the lease purchase agreement. The resolution that approving the lease is kind of the actual action item for you today, is the resolution. And then, we'll carry forward with executing these agreements as we get closer to our actual transaction date and beginning to make this a reality. Any questions?
Any questions? I do.
Okay.
When we're doing this, this, so you explained the mechanism of how this works. Is there, I don't know if it's the right question to ask, but is there guardrails in place to ensure that taxpayer dollars, while we're doing this, to track those dollars to show each month, here's our payments, here's how we're doing this, making sure that we're being fiscally transparent with this?
So, yeah, I mean, my intention is to really reflect this throughout our financial reporting in several different ways. One, we'll have the project itself, and so, the last few pages of that whole financial reporting package are our annual capital maintenance and projects that we approve in the spring and that we then execute throughout the year. I probably will have a separate page in and of itself, just to talk about how this project comes together. You know, I mentioned earlier about moving the funding from the general fund and creating that funding stream, and then, it'll also incorporate, you know, this financing with it as well, in terms of, and eventually, then the construction costs will be booked into there. And so, I want to have real good clarity for everyone to see, to know exactly how this is coming together and how it will build in over time.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's all I needed to hear. Anyone else?
Maybe just in the spirit of clarity, we went through this first time. We discussed this with Mr. Ridgeway, but he also negotiated a reduced net price in doing this, which saved the taxpayers about a quarter million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's thing one, that's noteworthy. Thing two is, there is an interest rate associated with a lease, so that whoever holds the paper actually makes money on the value or their cash, right? What is that functional interest rate?
5%.
Right. So, it's exactly what he explained. So, that's important for people to know, and 5% money is relatively inexpensive. And then, typically, a lease purchase will have a buyout amount, not dissimilar to what one might see in a vehicle, a consumer vehicle lease, and then a purchase amount. And if we add the buyout amount... And if we add the buyout amount, we still get to that total amount plus the interest, right?
Yes, and, and so again, we, we had, we had considered taking this transaction through a, through a financial institution, through a bank, that, that, that will do this before. The seller basically volunteered to participate in that. It's a little bit unusual because most of these trends, you know, a capital lease transaction usually doesn't have a private, you know, the seller financing it, usually it's going through that, that third-party independent financial institution. So really glad that he was willing and able to do that, because we were able to meet in the middle and basically split the interest cost that the bank would have been earning over this time, and so we get to keep some, he's gonna get to keep some. So it's, it's a little win-win situation there for us.
And it provides us a lot of fiscal agility during this window.
Exactly.
So it's a quality financial transaction is my point.
Well, entertain a motion if there is one.
Miss Upchurch, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding lease purchase terms between Red Rock Investment Company LLC and Lewis Palmer School District Thirty-Eight for the lease of real property located at twelve hundred Synthes Avenue in Monument, Colorado, authorizing Chief Business Officer Brett Ridgeway to complete negotiations and finalize the transaction, including signing on behalf of the district when necessary and appropriate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ron Schwartz has seconded. So there is a motion to adopt the resolution regarding the lease purchase terms between Red Rock's Investment Company and Lewis Palmer School District Thirty-Eight. Is there any discussion?
I think it's fair to say there's been a lot of discussion up to this point. This isn't something we're just doing on a whim here, so.
Right. Well, and this is, we're voting on the resolution.
Yes.
Keep in mind that this is the resolution that we're voting on. Okay? I, yes, we have.
And we appreciate your hard work on this, Brett. I think it's a great deal to keep it together.
Great, thank you. And just to be clear, when it, when it, in the motion, when we talk about completing negotiations, that's really immaterial parts, you know, of the negotiation. If some material change were to come for some reason, I'd be bringing it back to you.
We would expect nothing less.
Yes.
Anybody else? Seeing none. All right, Ms. Wood, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Dr. Schenk.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch. Hi. Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway.
You're welcome.
And that passes, the resolution passes. We now are going to move on to item D four, which is to consider approved changes to the Board of Education meeting scheduled for 2025. I think this is gonna be a pretty quick discussion, but, Dr. Dattery, was, are you, who is doing this one?
I can certainly take lead on this if you would like and just explain the changes that, that has been discussed and putting before you tonight for, that you need to take a vote on how you want to go. The first change I had shared with you was moving the work session. It's, so both of these changes are to our April meeting. I want to start there. Our work session as well as then our business meeting, so we're talking about April twenty twenty-five. The first is to move our work session from April first to April eighth due to a conflict that I have. As your superintendent, and an opportunity that I have to be at an Institute for Education Innovation for superintendents, to be able to go and learn kind of with, with many others, and it's an invitation to be a part of that organization. So with your approval, I would attend that, and then we would move our work session to the Tuesday following. Then the second discussion for you to have and to vote on is the regular meeting is currently on April twenty-first. As Ms. Upchurch was noting, that is actually Easter, what is on the holiday is noted as Easter Monday, so Easter is on that Sunday before, and then this is the Easter Monday. And it was suggested that maybe we move that back either to Tuesday night, which we have done, is sometimes move our meetings to Tuesday night, or we could move it to the following Monday, which would be, so it would be either on April twenty-second, Tuesday, or April twenty-eighth, the following Monday. So those are the two points of discussion for you.
So what we could look at is a proposal, since we're moving the April, if we want to move the April first meeting to April eighth, it would still make sense to potentially move the April twenty-first meeting to the April twenty-eighth, thus allowing still enough time between the meetings that would be the same. Or if the board has conflict of time and would look at a different date, such as the twenty-second. But we would need a motion to, yeah, we would need to make a motion to change the date.
I'm, I'm good for April eighth or, and the, the twenty-second or the twenty-eighth, so I'm open all three days, so we can drill those down and make a motion.
Mr. Brown, do you have a preference?
I would be fine with either. If I were to have a preference, it would be the twenty-second versus the twenty-eighth, but I can make either work.
Okay.
No preference.
No preference. Mr. Brown, would you like to make a motion on the dates?
So I'd like to make a motion to amend the calendar with the, sorry, moving the work session from April first to April eighth, and to move the, let's see here, the board meeting from the twenty-first to the twenty-second. You guys are okay with that?
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I am going to reread that. So Mr. Brown has made a motion to amend the 2025 calendar for the April work session from April first to April eighth, and the regular board meeting from April twenty-first to April twenty-second, and it has been seconded. It kind of already had discussion, but is there any discussion? I know we're all good. All right. Ms. Wood.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Dr. Schenk.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch.
Aye. Now we're gonna move on to our amended agenda, which would be now D five, which is to consider approve our consent agenda E four, which was the selection of Bridge Brothers for the construction of the pedestrian bridge in connection with the Safe Routes to School Project. Mr. Ridgeway.
Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer. Final time, I promise. First want to, first just want to start off by apologizing to you for how, how this all came, came about. This is, this is a little confluence of events that, that we didn't recognize was playing out the way it was until you drew our attention to it over the weekend. And it really is because Ricky, Ricky Vestal, who's our Director of Facilities, has been the shepherd of this project, this Safe Routes to School project. No excuses, it's just, you know, kind of what happened is after three days of, of, of snow removal, then he went off for a week-long vacation for hunting, and all of a sudden remembered, oh, this, this has really got to get in front of the board for some action. This whole process has been a, kind of a lesson of hurry up and wait.
Yes, it has.
You know, and so we wait and wait, wait for months, sometimes years, and all of a sudden, boom, we gotta get something done, we gotta get it done right now, unfortunately. So, so I have this, this presentation here to kind of just orient us, because, because this has been such a multi-year endeavor to make this happen, what this whole thing is about, Safe Routes to School. And, and so the, the first slide here is really just the, the, the aim of this grant program that is run principally through the State Department of Transportation, CDOT. And so we have the opportunity as a school district to partner with CDOT to talk about having safe routes to schools, particularly with, with walking and bicycle riding. The coming slides here kind of give you this good indication of how long this has been in play, since two thousand eighteen. So really, hurry up and wait type of stuff over that time. So some of the background in there is when we, we originally agreed to this, this program, partnering in particular with the Woodmore Improvement Association, as well as the Colorado Department of Transportation for this. The, the Woodmore Improvement Association, of course, is, is, this is all about doing things through the Woodmore community, having a trail system through the Woodmore community. So that was something that, as I understand, that that was something they had great interest in, and they were willing to partner with the school district, because again, this has to be a school district-sponsored program, if you will, because this is Safe Routes to School, so they couldn't really do it without us. But they were willing to come alongside us, with us, and also indicate that they would handle the reimbursement requirements, because although, as with a lot of grants, when you apply for this grant with CDOT, CDOT's gonna pay the ninety percent, that ten percent's gonna have to come from somewhere else, and, and so Woodmore was volunteering to put in that, that. So there's no real direct cost to us, there's time and effort to us, but really the cost to the district will be limited to that. I mentioned this little, this little note anecdote here that lots and lots of D thirty-eight tune over, you know, and, and the roles like, like I'm in in finance, I think was particularly involved in slowing this down from where it originally started in two thousand eighteen. There also was a change in scope that was determined when CDOT made a decision not to widen Lake Woodmore Drive, which is to the south side of Woodmore Lake, and I'll show you some map pictures here in a minute that will probably help, help this. But the original assumption is that they were gonna widen that, and there was gonna include some walking paths associated with that. When they decided not to do that, and the reason they associated not, decided not to do that was to not mess with the spillway that comes off of the dam of Woodmore Lake, then that created a, a need for there to be a bridge across the spillway. And so as we, as we, let's see where am I at? Sorry, moving forward off of two, twenty-two, then we had to, we had to go into some amended agreements with, with the project, some additional funding was gonna be kicked in from that, for that as well. And so we entered this Third Amendment just, just in January of twenty twenty-four with an IGA with Woodmore Water and Sanitation, which is separate from the Woodmore Improvement Association, separate entities, but the Woodmore Water and Sanitation owns the lake, owns the dam, owns the spillway, doesn't want any of that messed with, because that could mean bad things if you mess with the dam and the spillway. And so getting that IGA completed both got us to the point where we could do the bridge over the spillway, also, they also did allow us, as part of our project, to use lower dam road as part of the entire trail system. So, so that, we, we got that established, like I said, back in early twenty twenty-four, then in, in here in September twenty twenty-four, we were able to issue the RFP for the bridge construction. Again, this is a grant program, it's a reimbursement grant, so we will execute the projects, we will, we will spend the money and then get reimbursed for, for that. And so, so that's why this next step of the process in terms of issuing the RFP, to build the bridge, which will be a single span constructed off-site and then delivered to us and placed upon the pylons once the pylons then get constructed. There's an eight-week lead time in terms of constructing the bridge, and so that's why the, in terms of that hurry up and wait style, it's like, oh, let's hurry up and get this order placed for the bridge construction so that we can be ready for it by the, we can then get access, I should say it this way, actually, when we get the access to the drawings of how the bridge will be put together, then we can construct the pylons that it will be set on, and then we can proceed with this, hopefully in a much more rapid fashion as we get into early twenty twenty-five. So let me, let me just skip ahead real quick to, to some of the, the pictures here. This, this, this picture right here is the trail system as, as it would be upon completion. And it really is, is starting from Lewis Palmer Elementary School in the southeast, going through Lewis Palmer Middle School, and then up to Palmer Ridge High School here in the, in the northwest section of this. And so this, this color line that you see going across, around, around the lake, around, around the Woodmore development is the full trail system that is gonna be put in place. The portion that we are really focusing on right now is here in the southern end of, of Woodmore Lake, where the dam and the spillway exist. And so if we go to, we can zoom in on that and see that this is Lake Woodmore Drive. This is how we get from, to Lewis Palmer Elementary School from here, for instance. And so this is the spillway that we're talking about, that right now, students, you know, people that are walking, we have to, have to come down off of here and then walk right through this spillway area and then back up onto, onto this path. And so when water's in that spillway, that's not gonna be a great scenario, so they want to have a bridge that spans this entire spillway across, not touching the spillway at all. That's why the pylons will be constructed outside of that area, and so we need a brand, a brand, a single span bridge that will, that will span that. This is just a quick picture of what that spillway looks like when you're driving by it, you know, and so it's, it's very, there's a big elevation change between what's up there at the top of the dam and what you're down here at the road surface, and again, currently you'd have to walk down onto this road surface to get, to get from one side to the other. So we, instead, they want to span a, a bridge across this, so that will be a safe route to school. And if I go to the next page, it just gives you a little bit of aerial perspective, again, of that, what we're, the area we're talking about, and how this bridge will basically link this trail to this trail. This, this is what is lower dam road right here, and that will be part of the trail system, and so that bridge will go right across here. So if I go back to the, why this mouse is jumpy tonight, it's a little frustrating thing. Well, I tried that, but it wasn't working any better than our. So, so if we, if we are able to award this, this, this RFP, and again, we're kind of doing this on behalf of CDOT, right? This, this is, this is our process that we're executing. CDOT is really the granting authority pulling, you know, giving us a lot of direction to this, so, you know, per, per their requirements, it has, it has to go with the lowest cost option. Lowest cost option is always a main consideration with awarding RFPs, but it's not all, every organization has, has their option, a choice on how they pursue that. But for CDOT, it has to be unequiv- unequivocally the lowest cost option. If we're able to do that, again, then we can, we can get the bridge ordered, start this clock of, of, of the bridge construction, get the pylons then constructed, so that we can hit in February, February, hopefully, to do another IGA with the sanitation district to go apart, go into that construction of those pylons and the bridge installation, and then move quickly after that would be done to post an RFP for the full trail system construct, the construction, and really get this thing underway so that it really can be completed finally, after what will then be what an eight-year endeavor. So again, hurry up and wait, fits and starts, whatever. Sorry it came to you in the manner it did, there was some, there was misunderstanding in terms of the amount, it was initially posted, I think you saw in, in your board back as a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, it really was supposed to be about ninety-seven thousand dollars instead, and then of course, this proposal that we're bringing to you is a ninety-eight thousand dollar proposal to construct that bridge.
That's a much better price.
So, some good lessons learned for us, but it also gives us a good opportunity to really bring this out and, and, and show you the whole, kind of the full picture, and what kind of benefit this, this will have for us at the end of the day and for our students. Questions, sir?
First of all, terrific project and wonderful that there was a grant available for it, and Woodmore's willing to partner with it. Once it is constructed, excuse me, constructed, which entity owns the maintenance?
That's a good question.
Do you remember, Melissa? Yeah, so the trail would be the WIA, the Improvement Association.
Part of the WI trail system, probably, yeah.
Yeah. The bridge, we will maintain the bridge.
Can we pass that maintenance off to Woodmore?
We have tried, they have declined.
Is there a useful life of the bridge where we're gonna have to come up with funds to replace it?
Of course there is. It's not gonna last forever.
I mean, I won't be here.
Yeah. Sorry? Yeah. So we, we, we've intentionally taken the, taken the longest-lasting design for it, but I don't know offhand what the, I want to say thirty years, but I don't, I'm not sure about that.
Steel or the composite decking?
Yeah, thirty to fifty years, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a little bit of harsh environment, but the bigger point, I think Mr. Norris is saying is as we do our long-term planning, do we need to start planning for twenty sixty, a two- $200,000 expense in that year's dollars, right?
Yeah, that would make sense.
So for those of us old-timers that recall, and I don't know if anybody else in this room recalls this, it was the board in 2017 did a resolution, I was not on the board yet, but the board did a resolution to put D38 resources towards writing the grant, doing the work to get the grant, and then in 2018, I believe it was February was when we got the report, that the grant was won, and that CDOT would put in $200,000 into the grant, and Woodmore Improvement Association would put in $50,000 into the grant, and D38 would put in energy and effort and series of unfortunate events, a lot of different individuals, COVID, all the things, and here we are, finally. So that's kind of where we are with this. There was even a discussion when the, I remember when the rehab center went in, and there was a discussion on making sure that the trail was safe for our students. So there has been some discussion on and off with this, so it has been sitting there, and it is past due, and it is for the safety of our students. So, and I congratulate all those that put in the effort to win that grant. So it's no actual out-of-pocket actual, is that your term, Mr. Schwartz, actual or realized dollars?
I don't know, but it sounds really good.
Direct costs is what.
Direct costs, yes. See, thank you.
Taxpayer cash.
Yeah. So that's where we are. Thank you for actually amending that price, because I was curious how we were going to get this done.
Yeah. And the total project is actually scoping out to around $750,000 right now, but again, that's coming from CDOT.
But that's not coming from, yeah.
It's not coming from the district.
Not our pocket, okay.
It's coming from CDOT and Woodmore.
I have a question before we enter into motions. When I'm looking at this map, and I have often wondered, is there an opportunity for us to talk to, I would love to talk to our county and our Woodmore Improvement Association? When you're looking at that map right there, where do our students cross Woodmore Drive and over there by the middle school? When that traffic gets pretty tight and pretty busy, I wouldn't, I would like to have a conversation with our government agencies to put in a crosswalk light similar to what we have in downtown Monument, if that's feasible. But I don't know that anybody has had that conversation with them. I've tried to reach out a couple times, but I would continue to like to press in and be more annoying with it.
So we've been working with.
Melissa, do you want to come over this, so that you could be heard better? Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
So we've been working with, I think it's CDOT that's working on the roundabout to the north of the school, and at the point in time when they put that in, there will be some crosswalks at that location, slowing the traffic down, having a safe walk area where if they get halfway through and can't get across, they can land. Getting lights is very difficult. I am absolutely willing to go to the challenge and try to get them in, but I have to wait until they get that roundabout in, because they want to see how the traffic flows before they'll consider moving forward with additional signage.
Okay. Thank you for looking into that. That gives me hope that we've actually been proactive in that discussion. Also, I didn't know we were going to do a roundabout there.
Where will the roundabout be?
It's up here at the top of this football field.
Deer Creek and Woodmore.
Deer Creek and Woodmore.
Right there.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none?
Now, how do we get that all the way up to Furrow?
Well, if this is 750,000, I'm sure it's only another three grand.
You're funny. All right, is there a motion on the floor?
Ms. Upchurch, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Well, first, you're going to make a motion, we're not on consent agenda yet. First, we need to make a motion to.
I apologize, I don't think I actually wrote the motion.
Yeah, it's still under, it's still under E4.
Okay, well, we can do this.
We can figure it out.
Yep.
Do we need to separate?
Well, we could make a motion to just include it in the consent agenda now, or we could make a motion on this separate issue.
It's currently listed under consent agenda.
Well, we made the motion to take it out of the consent.
To make it as current.
So I think you need to move, it'd be best to move on this as a separate item.
Yes.
It's pretty much a simple motion to approve the award of the bridge construction to Bridge Brothers as presented.
I'll just reread that one.
Sure.
Yeah, all right. Well, then, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item E4, the selection of Bridge Brothers for the construction of the pedestrian bridge in connection with the Safe Routes to School project.
It's B5.
As presented.
As presented.
B5.
And the.
B5? D5, yep.
D5.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to select Bridge Brothers for the construction of the pedestrian bridge in connection with the Safe Routes to School project, which is Item D5, in the amount of, wait, did you, you didn't do an amount? Nope, okay, that's the motion, and that's the second. Is there any discussion?
He said as presented, so I can raise that.
Sure. Any discussion? It was messy we got there.
Yeah, yeah, it started with us.
All right, Ms. Wood.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Ms. Schwartz.
Aye.
Dr. Schenk.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch. Aye. Now, for D6, approval of consent agenda.
Ms. Upchurch, I'll make another motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? No, well, I'm going to take a point of privilege as chair in the discussion, because what is on the consent agenda is course approvals, and I want to lean into the Unified Physical Education Course. I am so thrilled to see that somebody, that our educators brought this forward, because this really leans into our various students, our neurodiverse students, our different abled students, students that may not be able to participate in just a PE class the way we think, and so this also, in addition, builds leadership in our neurotypical students to participate in these classes and these, with our students, and so I think it also builds community, it builds relationship, it brings our students together, and it just, that's such a wonderful, these course selections just absolutely touch me. And we have a, we have our unified sports teams, like our basketball team that have come about, and this is just recent in D38, and it's been a long time coming, and so I just, I want to say thank you for bringing this forward to, for us, for our approval, because it's long overdue, long needed, and it just warms my heart that our students, that this will help all of our students, every single one of our students. So that's my comment, to convince my board to vote yes, in case they were thinking of voting no. Any other comments, discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Wood.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Ms. Schwartz.
Aye.
Dr. Schenk.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch. Aye. And finally, we have G1, oh, F1, I mean, our future meetings. Dr. Dattery, do you like to jump into this one?
Certainly, I can do so. We have, at our upcoming work session, we have four topics, and one of which will be that we will be inviting Ms. Amy Atwood, she is our lobbyist, and she will be joining us at that meeting. And in addition, we will have a strategic plan update, we will also review our staff survey data and best practices, and we will have another one, a Career and Innovation Center update, so we will bring that to you. At our December 16th meeting, there's a few things that we did talk about today, so we will move the evaluation review and audit of our AT systems and practices to our December 16th meeting, in addition to looking at approval as we talk tonight about our district boundaries, so that will be coming to you as a vote. We will again have a Career and Innovation Center update, as you know, that is a standing item, and we talk about that every two weeks, to make sure that we are staying on top of things. We will also bring forward to your, as an action item, the Grace Best, the option and decision on that, as well as the land parcel sale, and so that will be coming to you as our more policy discussions, we'll bring to you policy revisions G, and then a first reading on policy I around instruction. So it will be, and we'll of course have Mr. Ridgeway up here again on, about our, talking about our, approving our audit and report, as well as additional aspects on our budget. And finally, we do need to bring to you approval, action item on our calendar revisions. So there's just a few small revisions to the 25-26 school year that Ms. Wetstein will be bringing forward and for your consideration and approval. So lots coming in December, we have many things going, lots of irons in the fire, if you will, but I think they'll be good, good discussions, and we'll bring about good outcomes.
Quick question.
Yes.
Do we need to vote on our mill certification in December?
Yes, I apologize if I missed that, I'm not sure that was on here, but yes, we do.
Okay.
And we did talk about that, so thank you.
Yep. And then when we approve our 20, when we, what month do we approve our 20, our following year and the following year calendar as a whole?
So that will be at this next December board meeting. So we'll bring both, they're, the changes are really in the, well, they're both, both years, yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts or considerations?
Yeah, anything different?
No? Okay. And Sean, I'm sorry that you guys didn't get to do the pathways to your schools before you graduated high school, but.
I know, I'm sad to be graduating. It was awesome.
Especially after hearing like all those classes, like, come on, man.
Should we propose a motion to provide you a fifth year?
Yes.
I second.
Mr. Norris?
Do you have anything, sir? Dr. Schenk?
No.
Mr. Schwartz?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Brown?
I do not.
Okay. Well, then, we are moving on to G1, executive session. Go ahead, sir.
Ms. Upchurch, I'd like to make a motion to convene an executive session to discuss a personal matter, the superintendent's evaluation in accordance with Colorado Revised Statute 24-6-402, subsection 4, paragraph F, sub-paragraph I.
And the board will invite our Superintendent Dr. Stacy Dattery to join us in executive session, and then following the executive session, there will be no further school district business discussed at the meeting, and we will be adjourned. So, and we will meet you all upstairs. Thank you.
Aye.
Oh, yes, we need a vote on that one, please.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Ms. Schwartz.
Aye.
Dr. Schenk.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch. Aye. Thank you. And we are adjourned-ish.[1781.83]